6:00 PM and I'm going to call the August 3 meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of Carrollton to order. If you'll all rise and have the pledge of allegiance with me.
My pledge of allegiance is the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Councilmember Jacklin Bridges is going to do our invocation.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Lord God for this day. Thank you Lord for waking us up this morning, starting us on our way, Lord God. Lord God, as we navigate through our community, Heavenly Father, that we have unity, Lord God, peace dear Heavenly Father, that we unite as one in our community. Lord God, as we set forth for this meeting tonight, that you would allow it to be done in decency and in order to glorify you dear Heavenly Father. As the Scripture teaches, we've got many members but one purpose, for all. These and all of the best in your son Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray. Let every heart say, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, this time we're going to have our public comments, but before we do, I'd like to read something to you. Public comments are an opportunity for the public to address the Mayor and Council with any issues or concerns that they may have. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. This public comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. All remarks should be directed to the Mayor and Council as a group and not to any staff or other person in attendance. Comments should not use profane or obscene language and should not be made at an inappropriate volume. Speakers who violate these rules of decorum may be removed from this meeting. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer session with the Mayor and Council or staff. The Mayor and Council will generally not comment nor take any immediate action on public comments made at this meeting. There was a sign up sheet in the back. Speakers will be recognized in the order listed on the sign up sheet first, and then if there's any additional time left, then we'll take additional public comments. Speakers should state your name and address at the time you begin your comments. Mr. Triplet, can I have that list of public comments, please? Our first person to speak is Mr. Johnny Jackson. Sure.
It's an extra thick mask and I can't hardly do anything with it. I'll put my timer on.
Mr. Triplet is our official timekeeper.
My name is Johnny Jackson. I live at 86 Bull Run Road in Carrollton, 30116. Y'all ready? I'd rather not be here because what I know, I know that each one of you, each one of you members took this position as a service to your community. Nobody stands to gain personally by being here, so I'm not comfortable because what I have to say is not flattering and I'm just not, I just have a moral obligation to speak up about this. I've benefited greatly from living in Carrollton. I love Carrollton so much. I went to college here in the eighties. Thirty years later, I had an opportunity to move back, move back, married a girl from Carrollton, and I'm as happy as a pig in slop, you know, to be here in Carrollton. I'm here, the reason I'm here today is to call for Jim Waters' immediate resignation. We're all aware of all these Facebook posts. I'm sure everybody's had a chance to see them. They're demeaning, dehumanizing. They went on for four years straight. It's on the news, made us look bad. If you Google right now, if you Google Carrollton news and you click twice, what you're going to see is Jim and ugly memes. I don't think that speaks to the, to the character of Carrollton, Georgia. And also, the reason I'm here is no one here has made a statement regarding that situation other than Jim. He's controlling the narrative. He's continued to make these Facebook posts even after, even after we were on the news. And when people have, you know, called him on it on Facebook, he's said stuff like, "Make my day" and, you know, made personal insults to people, "Hello funny hat" and childish stuff like that, and it's just unacceptable. Why does it matter? Well, you know, we were dependent upon University of West Georgia, we're fortunate enough to have them, Tanner Hospital, all these industries. We tried to recruit people to work in these places. And if there's a good surgeon that can come here and he looks and sees that stuff on, you know, when he Googles Carrollton and that's what he sees, he is not going to want to come here. If he's a person of color or just a person with integrity, he's going to not want to raise his children in this environment. And I'm calling on each one of y'all to speak up about this. Y'all ain't made a peep about it. It's shameful. It's ridiculous. If y'all don't, if y'all refuse to address this, if you just continue on the path you've been going, we're just not going to make a peep, we're not going to answer emails, we're not going to do anything, no matter what good works you do, please let me finish this sentence. I mean, I've waited several months in order to speak. If y'all continue on this path, anything you do, whatever good works y'all do from this point forward, it's going to be overshadowed by this cloud of racism.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, your time's up. Thank you.
Please address it as soon as possible. We need a statement.
Patricia Wyatt.
My name is Patrice Wyatt.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrice.
It's okay. I'm homeless. I see a lot of activity in this community and everything, addressing the homeless. Now, I see all these new, pretty houses, pretty apartments, but we can't get in them. I'm homeless with two kids. The waiting list for the project is three years. I work some days a week, 12-hour shifts, just to pay for a hotel from hotel to hotel to hotel. Y'all just built three new houses on King Street, but a person like me or another person that's homeless can't get in it because of their background. And I don't have nothing on my background. My credit is just screwed up. I'm asking for help for me and other single women with kids that need help. I don't, this is my first councilman meeting. Thank y'all for letting me speak. I'm hurting. Before I let, keep being homeless and letting my teenage boy get in trouble, I don't know what more to do but to come to y'all. And whatever, what's going on right now with the police and this racism, I have a six-foot-one, 210-pound black son that I'm coming to y'all and begging y'all for help. I need help. I'm begging for help. This is my first time being homeless and being in this situation. Just please hear me and look at me and feel me, the tears that I got coming out my face. This is how bad I'm hurting right now because I do not want to lose my kids to the system. I don't. I'm please begging y'all to help me.
Ms. Wyatt, are you familiar with Circles of West Georgia?
I ain't called all the Circles of West Georgia. I ain't called Helping Hands. Only thing they want to do is give us food. That's all they want to do. I can afford a place to stay, but I can't afford it when I'm having to pay hotel fees just to put a roof over me and my kids. I don't have the money to pay a first month in a deposit or put in the application fee to get an apartment and they turn me down because of my credit score is a 448. Yes, I've had made bad decisions as a young girl, but I'm working on it. I don't, I'm not a troubled start. I just need help with my kids.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. I really do.
This is my first time coming up in front of y'all, and I hate to have to come to y'all like this, but I'm at my breaking point to where I don't want to give up or lose faith and turn to something wicked to get me and my kids ahead. So I'm coming to all my leaders that y'all are to beg y'all for help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm homeless. I work at the BP in front of Big Chick. 12-hour shifts, sometimes seven days a week, just to get a little head, just to get a little money to put in my pockets. You go to open hands, only thing they want to do is give you boxes of food, which I'm thankful for that. I am very thankful for that. But as a mother, you don't want to keep moving your kids from hotel to hotel. I have slept in my car. One day last, we got slept in my car and put my kids with one of my friends. As a mother, that is heartbreaking. That is heartbreaking to have to put your kids somewhere and you sleep in a car. Then you go to the D-Backs, you go to the Housing Authority as y'all instruct us to do. It's a three-year wait limit for the Housing Authority. I'm not asking for no million dollars. Patrice Wyatt. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Ms. Carolyn Gray. Good evening.
I just happened to be here at the last meeting and there was a gentleman who spoke about the Confederate Memorial. And we were told, there was an announcement that there would be no further discussions by the Council on the Confederate Memorial. And I thought, well, that's all well and good for the Council. I guess you can make that decision for yourself, but I don't think that that should include the citizens who may have something to say about that. I'm a native-born Carroll Countyan. My last name is Gray. My great-grandmother was a slave. She was purchased out of North Carolina by a gentleman by the name of Gray up in Temple area. Every time I sign my name, I'm signing the name of a slaveholder. This is, Gray is not the name that I came here from Africa with. The color of my skin is not the color that I came here from Africa with. So I feel like, with all due respect to the Confederates, whose ancestors were killed in that terrible war, and it was not a war that was just, they were fighting to maintain slavery. So I can't say I'm sorry, but I would say this, that that Confederate Memorial has been here with us for over 100 years. The Civil War didn't last more than three years. Slavery lasted more than 300 years. When are we going to get a memorial for my ancestors? You know, if we were going by the amount of suffering, our ancestors' memorial would be as big as the courthouse. So I'm saying that even though the lawyer said that you weren't going to speak on this topic again, I would ask you to consider with respect the nearly 30% of African-Americans that live in the city of Carrollton. We, every day of our lives that we've lived here, we've walked past, every time we go to the courthouse, we walk by that statue, which is an insult to us. And don't we matter? Don't Black Lives Matter? And don't, you know, we're not going to go into that discussion, but I feel that the city owes some respect to the Black population and to reconsider removing this statue. I understand that neither the city or the county claim ownership of the memorial, so I don't think it falls under that new law by Mr. Kemp that it can't be removed. If nobody owns it, why not remove it? And like I said, all due respect to the ancestors of the Confederates, I can appreciate their humanity, but it's no greater than mine.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Ms. Pam Hightower.
Thank you. While I'm going to speak, I'm Pamela Hightower. I live at 545 Eagles Nest Circle in Carrollton. I have had several conversations with Mr. Jim Waters and some of the other council persons. I have shared with them that the post and the mentality of some of those posts are completely wrong, especially since he chose to be a servant of people and not just people who agree with those positions. Jim Waters has apologized in the news and on Facebook. I share with him that an apology for offending people is different than apologizing for wrongdoing. He has since opened up to several people, including me, wanting to listen and reconsider his actions and his response at the June council meeting. I would rather have someone on the city council who is willing to listen, learn, and work with people who once disagreed with him than someone who may be a closet racist making decisions that harm our community. Jim has made several votes in favor of things that have helped our community. Jim Waters is not a racist and is learning, just like the rest of us. He is now understanding how those posts are wrong and the true meaning and purpose for the stance of Black Lives Matter. If only more people were willing to listen, learn, and change their mindset. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Ms. Boykin.
I am excited to be here today. I'm here because it is time for change, and I want to say good afternoon to this beautiful panel. Good afternoon to everybody. I'm Annette Boykin. I forgot to say that. I thought everybody knew me. And I stay at 503 D Elders Circle. It's not a mansion, but it is a place that I call home. And I have a 1967, a 1964 and a 1974 paper that lists the same thing we talking about now. And in my mind, some people think I'm a racist, some people think I'm mean, but God said, who would I see and let them cast the first stone? I come today talking about Carroll County. We need to get together and sit at a table and stop throwing darts at each other and find a solution. I don't have much money, but I went and got these simple little puzzles because I could go all day and say, police brutality, it's got to be changed, the roadblocks on the west side's got to be changed, the green belt, need to put some bicycles over there on the west side so we can ride them too. But I'm not going to say all that, but what I want to do is do a proposal, a challenge to people with, today. And if somebody can help me open this puzzle, you help me, sir. I'm going to take this puzzle, and I wanted it to be a beginning of a solution for all these problems because we all are part of this puzzle, of this great place called Carroll County, of Glenn Freys, Jim Waters, Elaine Bridges, Bob Ogden, Judge Kason, I still call it Judge, even see the mail, and the rest of y'all. But it's not enough to say something unless you're going to put it in action. So we'll count this one for the city council. But I'm going to be the first one to pop one of these puzzles out, and I'm going to put what I want to change, and I'm going to put my name, and I'm going to be a part of this first puzzle, get it put together as us and the community as one, and we can talk about it later because we can be here all night, throwing darts and stuff, but I'm going to put my name and that on this one. And my, what I want to talk about is poverty, and I'm going to put it right here and start this first puzzle to start a solution. And anybody else that want to start and put their name and see if we can get this puzzle together, and then this will be for the residents and everybody because it'll be insane, and then this will be for you all.
Thank you, Ms. Annette. And I, I'm sorry, is it Claude Charles? You live at 552 Alabama Circle? Oh, okay.
My voice might not like my speech.
That's okay.
Good evening to the city council and staff and the people that's working with the staff. I'm Charles Phillips.
Okay.
And I've been into community affairs for a lot of years in Atlanta, Douglasville, and this is my hometown, back to Carrollton. And guys, we do have some problems, and I know everybody is aware that we do. What we having a problem with is coming up with a solution for the problems. And Ms. Net, I followed a tough situation with Ms. Net. You know, you've got to sit down and want to resolve a problem in order for it to be resolved. You've got to first figure out it is a problem. And once you figure out it is a problem, then you figure out together. And once you figure out it is a problem, then you figure out together, because that's what it's all about, and she spoke about it a few minutes ago, it's about together. We got homeless, we got racism, we got police brutality, we got all kinds of, and there's other things going on other than these things, quote unquote. But we got to put one, two, three for one, two, and three goals to move forward. And we got to come together to figure out what's one and what's two and what's three. We're not doing that, guys. We're not doing it. Everybody got a job to do. I'm a community leader in the community. I hear people speak, been hearing it for years. I know what some of these problems are, you know? We need to come out and talk to the community every once in a while, guys. You know, hear what these people that live this daily life right here is talking about. I talk about the church is not coming out. Church can know, you can have a person actually sitting next to a church for years, living there, and the church don't even know who their neighbor is. This ain't right. We, if we gonna love and we gonna pretend that we want to do something different and make it better, then we got to do it. Talk is a beginning, but the talk is cheap. Like I said, this is not my first rodeo trying to help and make Carrollton better than what it was, what it have been, what it need to be. But we all have to do this together. You got to clean our hearts out, guys. We got to clean our heart out and our minds, got to come together and say, hey, there is a problem, and we know what they are. You know, we got places that, I suggest this here, matter of fact, if there's some way that we can, we can come together and come up with, create some type of shelters for, not just shelter, where you can keep your family together, because most of the time when women are homeless, guys as well, and they have kids, and sometimes you have to break that up. And we need to put something on the agenda that we got money laid back for this, we got money laid back for that, we need to lay some money back for peoples that are coming to these bad situations where they won't have to deal with it like she left crying.
All right. Mr. Phillips, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Okay. Michael McPherson?
My name's Michael McPherson. I live at 103 Chadwick Place, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. Before I begin my three minutes, I wanted to thank you all for all that you do. I know how much you sacrifice. I know it firsthand because I live with it every day. So.
You can take your mask off if you want to while you're speaking.
I gotta kind of keep it down, you know, low profile. But I will take it down. Thank you, Jim. But I do thank you for it because I know how much you sacrifice, because my wife sacrifices in Villarica every day. So I'll go ahead and speak. I just, I've listened to some of the protests that we've had, the peaceful protests here in Carrollton, and I appreciate people expressing their First Amendment rights, and that's one of our fundamental rights as citizens in the United States. I hear how we are speaking in, at the end, they have prayers, talking about speaking in the name of God and in the name of our Son, Jesus Christ. But yet I see in these rallies where they're talking about vilifying one of you, and that's not in the name of God and it's not in the name of Jesus Christ. It's vilifying, it's hatred. And not only are they demanding a resignation, but they're actually going out and trying to attack the man and try to see, connecting him with his job and this and saying the ugly things and stuff, that it goes beyond freedom of speech. And none of you are immune to it, none of you. I want to take you back to 1970. Coming home from Vietnam, we were told not to wear our uniforms. Don't wear your uniforms, get off the plane, go in there, there'd be a special entrance for you. You can go in over here. Some people decided to wear their uniforms. They decided to walk through the protesters. It took guts, didn't it? Took guts. Walk through the protesters, be called a baby killer, be called a murderer, and be spit at, stuff thrown at you. It took guts to wear your Class A uniform and go through there. Well, I'll tell you what, Jim Waters is wearing a uniform right now for all of you and what's happening to Jake Hollins up the road and all over America. Because it'd be a whole lot easier for Jim, my friend, it'd be a lot easier for him to say, I quit. You know why he say, I quit?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Excuse me, excuse me.
A lot easier to say, I quit. But he's not going to quit.
Mr. McPherson?
Yes.
We are not gonna have that.
No, I'm just saying.
No, Mr. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay. You need to lower your tone.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Jackson?
I'm sorry, I was out of line.
Yes, you were. And how much time does he have left?
I'll just finish with this. Jim will, Jim's wearing the uniform for us, and I'm sorry, I'm passionate about it because I'm passionate for you guys as well. He's wearing the uniform for you. He's going to stand strong. He's not going to quit because none of us need to be forced out and quit. And I'm sorry for my passion because it's not for just Jim, it's for you guys. And I'm sorry, Mayor Kason.
Time's up. Thank you. No, sir, no more comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Sam Reeve, and I'm a multi-generational byproduct of this community. I live at 344 West Club Drive. And I'm here tonight because I love the people of Carrollton and Carroll County very much, the people who have helped to raise me, to give me hope, to teach me, to inspire me, and who have instilled a sense of justice and accountability in me since my beginning. My love for Carrollton demands my action. It gives me the strength and the courage to say today that I am deeply disappointed in this council, the purported leadership for the city of Carrollton. I know many of you personally. I intern twice for the city of Carrollton and high school and work directly with you. And I respect all of you. But as I have streamed the previous two meetings of this government body, I've seen multiple failed opportunities, responsibilities, to lead this ship through stormy waters. It is not enough for you all, as the mayor and council members, the most powerful elected officials of this city, to say, as you did last month, that there is nothing legally to be done about the Confederate monument, or that it is not in the council's place to make a comment on the recall or not of a council member. These may be necessary statements, but they are not enough. Moreover, they're not examples of leadership, they're simply legal jargon you use to avoid taking any kind of public stance on the critical issues of our time. This tactic is not and has never been politically neutral, and we need only look at segregationist politics to see that. I'm here to remind the council and all constituents tuning in this evening that we, as constituents, did not vote for you all, nor do we simply seek from you all to read out Georgia law. We've asked you to lead. We voted for you because you promised to lead us, and leadership takes courage. Leadership requires you to stick your neck out every once in a while and publicly to stand up for what is right and just. As the most powerful elected officials in the city, it's time that you be brave, as Gerald Byrd was as a council member and has he implored all of you to do two months ago. While this may not have legal recourse, sorry, what's that time? While you may not have legal recourse to make changes to that monument or to remove the unfit to serve among you, you, like me, and perhaps even more importantly than me, have the largest platform in town to make your case to the community and to the council. I urge you to stand publicly for Black Lives Matter. I urge you to use your office to support Black life and Black thriving in Carrollton. I urge you to speak and work publicly to bring down the monument that glorifies slavery in our literal and spiritual center of town across from the church in which I grew up, whether or not you and your immediate office can change it. And I urge you to speak out publicly against hate in all of its forms, especially if you hear it from a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we have the minutes from the July 13th and July 16th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I move that motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. All right. Motion carries. Mayor and council announcement or comment? Does anybody have a comment they'd like to make?
I've got one, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
I wanted to thank the Carrollton Police and the sponsors. I know Target Stores and Pilgrim's Pride poultry sponsored tube meet and greets, or the city called them Cool Conversations. And I went to three of these events and really enjoyed them. I think they were a great opportunity to meet and discuss things with people that, and listen, and thank you, Carrollton, for doing this and look forward to doing more of them. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank whoever is responsible, and I think it's somebody at this table, that got the parking lot lines repainted up off the square. Thank you very much. It was overdue. But Joel, if you didn't hear the praise there, I was thanking the police department for Cool Conversations, job well done, and it was a lot of fun.
Anybody else?
I would like to also thank the police department for solving a major crime during this past couple of weeks. We had a burglary at the Walgreens, and this group had burglarized, was it 23 or 43, 23 drugstores in the area. And the Carrollton Police Department was the one that solved that crime, and I want to thank them for their diligence on that and the excellent job that they did. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Grisner, do you have anything?
Just real quickly, concerning that robbery that they solved, I can think of two other occasions where our police solved a major crime that affected other areas, but those were not solved in those areas. I can think of a bank robbery that occurred in Alabama, and the poor guys decided to drive through Carrollton to get away, and that was a mistake. I recall a gentleman who, or maybe I shouldn't say gentleman, a person who robbed a number of convenience stores in the area and made the mistake of robbing one in Carrollton and left his fingerprints on the cash drawer, and Joel and his staff ran that down and caught him. So as I've said before, if you decide to break bad, don't do it here, they will get you. The other thing I just want to point out to the public, we are fighting this COVID pandemic daily, and things are changing daily. So if you planned on participating in an event or having something in one of our facilities and that gets changed at the last minute, we apologize for that, but we are doing the best we can do. And we're dealing with some, you know, outbreaks in different departments and different facilities, and that can happen. And again, we apologize, but we're doing the best we can do with that. Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate all the efforts that have been put forth, and several of you've made comments tonight about things that we need to do. We were doing things, and we were on a roll, and then COVID hit, and we had to address the most pressing issue at the time. And I know homelessness is a pressing issue, and that's something that we've all talked about. We've been in office seven months, and of that seven months, we've had a lot to deal with. And these are important issues. They're things that we do take seriously, we do, we are addressing. I've met with some of you about some solutions to possibilities of these. It's a work in progress. And Ms. Annette knows very well that mental illness has been a work in progress for us, but we're working very hard. We are working very hard to address all of these issues, but it takes time, and we are virtually a new council. We have one seasoned member here, we're one in two months. So we're working with people to try to help us address these issues and do the very best that we can do. At this time, I am going to excuse myself, and Mayor Pro Tim Waters is going to come forth and finish out the meeting. We have a celebrity here in Carrollton. He's a young man. His name is Ash Colwell. Ash had some very hard obstacles to come overcome to graduate from high school. He graduated from high school. He's graduated from college. And as a small child, he's always wanted to be on the Wheel of Fortune. And for y'all who don't know Ash, Ash has had a lot of obstacles to overcome. And his mother, who has been his biggest advocate and his biggest supporter, made sure that this young man got to be on the Wheel of Fortune, and it is airing tonight. And he has asked me to come and to tell, to welcome everybody and to stand with him while he debuts on national TV. And it takes a special event for me to leave this council meeting because this is my priority, and I want you to know that. But Pro Tim Waters is going to finish out our meeting, and I thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Absolutely.
We got the first agenda item, special use permit request for 401 Bankhead Highway. Okay, that's right. Approval of Virginia Agenda Items for consideration. We need to vote on that. Has, we ain't got to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, moving on to item number one, special use permit request, 401 Bankhead Highway food truck court. Petitioner, Mr. Brent Harris. Erica?
Yes. The only zoning item on your agenda this evening is a special use request at 401 Bankhead Highway for a food truck court. This particular location is the location of the Pelican Snowballs location, kind of across the street from Jerry's. The Planning Commission met and reviewed this request during their July meeting. They recommended approval of the food court, the food truck court with the following condition, that all participating vendors shall make a contribution to a local nonprofit entity. This was in keeping with the approval of the food truck court on Park Street with the applicant being Curtis Wilson a couple of months ago. So I just wanted to be consistent. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the ordinance? Or the special use permit? All right. Any discussion, Mayor and council?
Well, Jim, we did briefly discuss this in our work session this past month, and we are in the middle of changing some of these, some of this, the particular items of this ordinance. So I'm going to suggest that until we get that done, that we just table this request for this month, and we'll view it again after we have more discussion about the, so that's my motion, is that we table it for now, that we'll finish up our work on the changes, and then we can come back to it.
We got a motion to table.
I second that motion.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor of tabling this agenda item for 30 days, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, 2020 milliliter adoption. Tim?
Thank you, Jim. Jim Triplet's going to address this. I do want to say that this is the first time in a while that we- I do want to say that this is the first time in a while that we have rolled back our millage. We think it's the right thing to do in this economy. I want to point out that we have the lowest tax rate of any city in this area, the lowest by far. We also have the lowest utility rates, lowest sanitation rates, and yet we provide, we think, better and more service than any other city. But we are recommending that you roll back this millage rate, and frankly, it's been advertised this way, so there's really no other option than to vote this way, because it would throw off the billing cycle for the county when they bill the taxes. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Tim. You have in your Agenda Packs tonight a copy of the five-year levy history for the city, and also the projected levy for 2020 this year, based on preliminary assessment numbers from the Carroll County Assessors Office. As Tim was saying just a moment ago, this calculated rollback rate represents rolling back the millage rate in a revenue-neutral form, that the amount added to the tax digest through tax reassessment, reassessment of property, excuse me. And so, the calculated rollback is 4.489 mills, that's a slight decrease from 4.60 mills. This advertisement was run in the July 18th edition of the Times-Georgian, is required by state law, and have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Jim.
And again, to be clear to anybody in the audience that's not familiar with this, they are reducing the tax rate from what it was. They're reducing it to offset the increased taxes it would come in from people's property, from the values of their properties going up, so this is a reduction in the tax.
All right, any discussion about the millage rate adoption? Hearing none, got a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve it.
Got a second?
I got a second to motion, approve.
All right, we got a motion and a second to roll back the millage rate for 2020 to 4.489. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number three, Right-Away Abandonment Corporate Lane. Tim, or, oh, it's Tommy, thank you.
Once again, I'll step on what he's gonna say, but just to make sure that we're clear on this, there's a section of property on Corporate Drive that led from Corporate Drive to where the VA Center is now. It was plaited on paper as a road, it was never built, it is not needed, it would be inappropriate to put a road there now. The gentleman that owns the property on each side of this piece, of this strip of land, and you, I think there's a map in your package, would like for y'all to vote to abandon it, then he will offer to buy that from us. We won't give it to him, he'll have to pay fair market value for it, but that's what Tommy's about to present to you.
That's pretty much the sum of it, therefore, the city staff is requesting the city council to consider the proposed resolution that will give the city manager authority to dispose of the property according to state law. So at that time, we'll work with a attorney and, as far as obtaining the appraisal and coming up with the value for the property, but the property pretty well is useless now that the VA building and facilities have been developed. We're glad to have that, but I think the intent was to actually provide connectivity over toward Martin Drive or whatever developed there, so that's no longer possible with the development of the VA facility.
All right, any discussion about the Right-Away Abandonment Corporate Lane? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a second? All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, last item, Board Appointment, Carroll County Library Board.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. The Director of the Library System, Jeremy Snell, is here tonight, I know y'all have met him. It's time to reappoint two members as the Carrollton Representatives on the Carroll County Library Board. Robin Collins has served before, her term is up, but she would like to be reappointed. Kyle Bohannon has also served, her time is up, but she has served the full number of terms that is allowed, so she cannot be reappointed. The Library Board is recommending that you reappoint Robin Collins, and that you, in the place of Ms. Bohannon, that you appoint Dr. Susanna Velez-Castillan, I hope I'm saying that right. We're also asking that you stagger her term, because we don't need everybody to come up at the same time. So Robin would be a three-year term, the other lady would be a one-year term if you choose to do this. Thank you.
Any discussion?
That's a good suggestion, Tim. I'd make that motion, and we'd do it just like Jim said, or Tim.
Got a motion, second?
So moved the motion.
Got a motion and a second, so all those in favor of the board appointments as laid out by Tim, and in the memo to the Mayor and Council, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that does it, unless anyone's got anything they'd like to add from the Mayor and Council? All right, thank y'all for coming. It's my second time doing this, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you, meeting adjourned.